And we are the Coalition Loud and Proud, Outrage Corn Free, Civilly Disobedient Media, Broadcasting Live on the Worldwide Coalition Media Network here at the Go Local Live Broadcast Center, deep in the heart of the city we love, Providence, Rhode Island, the naked city, the city of well about 345,000 stories. Tonight, we're not talking about Providence, though. Facebook.com/thecoalitionradio, on the mighty, mighty Twitter at @coalition_radio, and of course, the mothership at coalitionradio.us. Now, we're talking about, as I lovingly refer to it, the forgotten cities to the north. I'm told anecdotally that years ago, one of the reasons why the major networks didn't get up there was because their communications gear was essentially incapable of handling some of the geography to broadcast from Wood Sockit. And so, Wood Sockit largely became even as insular and tribal state as Rhode Island, its own, if you're old enough to get this reference, its own private item. And the results sadly have been less than spectacular. Despite being the corporate home to one of the wealthiest corporations on the planet, and getting wealthier by the moment, it would appear to me, the host, that Wood Sockit has yet to really benefit from their presence. Despite having a strong, strong history of hard-working people in the mills, building Rhode Island during the heyday of the Industrial Revolution, it would appear that a lot of industry sadly has left Wood Sockit. And because of the balkanized manner in which we approach real estate taxes and tax breaks in the state, it suffered, I believe, was really the final indignity a couple of years ago, when it lost most of its retail base to a tax-incentivized investment in nearby Norton Smithfield. So that a great deal of Wood Sockit's economy, as it were, as challenged as it is, we get great people, great town, but as challenged as it is, essentially is exported on a daily basis to the next town over, where literally, large corporations have beautiful retail spots perched on the border. I don't know if it would be possible, unless they want to build one of those overhangs, you know, split-level things going over the border into Wood Sockit, I don't know if it would be possible to commit more indignities on a high level to a community that is so rich in history and has such a strong population. So, from time to time over the last few years, we've covered Wood Sockit politics. It's always been fascinating. You've got your own media up there, you've got the Wood Sockit paper, you've got two, not just one, two, as Dan York likes to put it, Wood Sockit Radio, each having its own rather distinctive viewpoint. All right? You've got multilingual cultural establishments dating back to its heritage as a French-Canadian border town, if you will, now towards being really one of the first truly multicultural cities in the state, where you've got a minority-majority, potentially, and a lot of the challenges faced with the decline of manufacturing coupled with weak, weak retail. So, it is with great joy that I reintroduce Alexander Kithis to the Coalition audience. He's running for city council. He had a huge victory just a few short days ago in a primary. And what we're going to talk about is Woonie Vision. We're going to talk about for the next hour or so, what do we do about a city named Wood Sockit? Welcome back.
Thank you so much for having me.
All right. Congratulations on the victory. It was rather convincing.
Yeah.
My friend Alicia, who sounds like Felicia, all right, told me, what, 52%?
Yes. Yeah, it was between 52 and 53, I think. I wasn't sure if that was before the mail ballots were counted, but yeah, no, it was pretty good.
No, that, in a primary, that speaks to something.
A four-way primary, yeah.
Right. That speaks to something. You've got the regular election coming up in November?
August 6th, yeah.
How does that work? Do you have your own, like, do you guys have like your own timezone up there?
No. We actually did used to have off-year elections. Up until 2013, municipal elections were on odd years. But no, because right now, Julia Brown resigned at the beginning of May, and so there's only six people on the council, and so this election is to fill that one single seat.
Ah, the much-vanted special election.
Yes, yes, it is.
Yikes. We don't name the opponent. In fact, let's go over a couple of ground rules of the Coalition here. First of all, as I mentioned in the run-up to Mr., reintroduction to the Coalition audience, we see people running for office regardless of their party affiliation as a high, high form of patriotism. And so, we obviously encourage, we encourage folks who are independent, a couple of rules. We don't handicap elections here. I'm not interested in your fundraising, I'm not interested in polls, I'm not interested, if you're going to win, I simply want to understand why you should. Now, however, the other rule is on the Coalition, if we like you, we invite you on the show. If we don't like you, we make fun of you. And if, in fact, you're a high-level, executive-style, oity-toity, connected politician type in Rhode Island, if you want to answer our questions, we simply make the answers up.
I'm the exact opposite of that, so, yeah.
So, let's start from the top. You know, in so many places now, you've got the state of the state, the state of the union, the state of the state. What is the state? You're a lifelong resident, right?
Yes, born and raised in Wood Sockit.
Right. What is the state of Wood Sockit, Rhode Island, right now?
So, yeah, that's, I mean, that's the talk on everybody's mind there, and I think, or the talk on everybody's tongue there, rather. And the situation there is like you alluded to before, that the mills of the, you know, mid-century of the 20th century, and really kind of into the 70s, 80s, they're gone now. And that industry is gone, and then, more recently, we've lost, like you said, we've lost other forms of commerce, you know, of retail. And so, what Wood Sockit has right now is this really awful form of economic and cultural depression, where there is not very much produced in Wood Sockit, and there's not very much, there's not a lot of retail establishments, and yet we have a population of 42,000, according to the census, much larger probably if the census is not as accurate as is being approximated. And so, of people who, it's very hard to find work in Wood Sockit, it's very hard to find, you know, products and services that you want. And so, what we have is a city government trying to run a municipality that is at the scale of a pretty big urban city, yet with a very, a very small tax base, a relatively small tax base. And so, you end up, we end up creating, not we, including myself and not you, but the city government has ended up creating this situation where now, the teachers went without a contract for nine months, and where they keep being faced with these awful decisions of basically solving the short-term budget problems by borrowing from the future. So, one thing that was just done in this year's budget was money was removed from the healthcare fund in order to put back into the money that was scooped from the pension fund, like, a year or two years ago. And so, it's like, that's not a solution, it's just borrowing from the future. And then, that's going to be a problem. And so, but that, and I'm not really blaming anybody for that, because that situation, the situation we're in is not good. And I mean, I will definitely give it to, give it to the current government, that both the mayor and the majority on the council, that they have done what I think is an all-right job trimming as much as they can of the budget. But the reality is that we need to develop our economy. We need to find ways to start, to rekindle our economy, looking at other cities that have undergone similar struggles as Wood Sockit, places like Pawtucket, Worcester, Fall River, you know, some might even say Providence, that much further along, you know, much further in the past. But we have to look at the things that have worked for them, and really try to regrow Wood Sockit's economy, not on the things of the past, but on what has worked for post-industrial mill cities. And now, all of that, the economic situation, is coupled with a very, a very changing culture in the 21st century. And that's culture that's changing worldwide, but also changing within the city, where, you know, we have these very rich French-Canadian roots, but we also have a lot of cultures represented in the city and amongst the population, but it's not necessarily there yet in sort of the political culture in the city. And I think that's a big problem, because it's, there's a big part of the population that are ignored or disenfranchised. And I don't, I mean, I know it's a pretty harsh criticism of our municipality, but I mean, it's kind of, it's what I've seen, and it's what I've, what I feel going door-to-door and talking to people who don't feel that the government, that the political culture in Wood Sockit really is for them, is representing them. And so, I mean, I think there's, and these things go hand-in-hand to create the situation where there's incredibly low civic engagement, because people just don't feel hope in the future of Wood Sockit. And that's something that I'm wanting to try to change. And I think that there are ways we can do that, and obviously get into those.
All right. I mean, you go back a handful of years ago, you had that, you had that article by The Washington Post.
Yes.
Now, one from this, which, and this is not from me, this is not me judging people, this is certainly not blaming people, this is me not judging people, but you had pictures that if you're of a certain age, were eerily reminiscent of Appalachia in the 1960s. To a certain degree, I think The Post, photography's an amazing art. You can certainly make a point on what with lighting, with the tact you take, and who, and how you want to portray folks. I thought that article diminished the spirit of the people in Wood Sockit.
Yeah.
It certainly played to a stereotype, and, but on the other hand, the facts remain, whereas the, it's a highly troubled economy, as you point out, with, with not a lot of growth on the horizon. It really requires almost an emergency writing of the ship. So, let's get into some of the issues. The elephant in the room, of course, is CVS. The, I want to give you an anecdote of a conversation I had. And I'm always very careful when I say things, I'm not attempting to project them onto you, nor am I asking you to take shots at me. It's not the style here. CVS is one of the largest corporations in the world. The former CEO of CVS was one of the primary sponsors of the University of Rhode Island's basketball arena. It's named after him. The former president of CVS is also one of the owners of the Pawtucket Red Sox. And as Kate Nagel and the first wild crew here at Go Local Prove did some research and pointed out, and it was a magical moment, a member of the 10th wealthiest sports ownership group on the planet. So, CVS has been awfully good to an awful lot of people. I happened to run into someone who works for a vendor to CVS. And if you, if you're like me, and you're kind of probably too well-traveling, you've been to Bentonville, Arkansas, which is the home of Walmart, that's a company town. And there's even a town in Indiana, which is the center, don't ask why I know this, the center of the RV industry, the center of, there's an RV Hall of Fame there, there's, is the center of the box truck business. There are, sprinkled throughout the country are these cities which are essentially company towns in the new millennium. Some of these towns have benefited greatly from them, if for no other reason than the constant infliction of money of people traveling into town, taking advantage of restaurants, hotels. They do business with the company, the company overlord. As a result, they do business with the town. That's not even remotely the case in Wood Sockit. You've got a highway, Route 99, that was essentially designed to get people into town as quickly and out of town as quickly.
It's the exit route for the large majority of CVS's employees, yeah.
Right. And so, as a result, if we're going to go New Millennium speak, the city of Wood Sockit has been left criminally incapable of monetizing CVS's presence. On top of that, there are significant tax breaks, which are given to CVS. Now, God forbid, this is me ranting here, I'm going to turn over to you in a second, but God forbid, we should just, I don't know, ask companies to not use taxpayer money to grow on. And to his eternal credit, Lincoln Chafee, a few years back when he was governor, attempted to roll some of those back at the state level. And instantly, instantly, CVS just dropped the bomb that, you know, if you do that, we're out of here. Now, the amount of money that they pay in taxes, and shame on me for not having it at my fingertips, maybe that's something you can check out for me, because I tried to find it, it's a little murky intentionally.
To my understanding, it's between $1 and $2 million in a payment-in-lieu taxation program.
All right. The annual, that's not even, that's, if you're an accountant, the term de minimis means that that amount is too small to appear on financial statements. So, the world headquarters of the largest, now under its new definition, one of the largest healthcare companies on the planet, whose revenue is in multiple billions, kicks in $1 or $2 million large to Woonie. For the love of God, and on top of that, by the way, does nothing, you know, I don't know, use some of their largesse to help build a couple of hotels downtown on social, or the, you know, you've got abandoned buildings right in the heart of town. Build a couple hotels. Do right by a community. Again, as a libertarian, you don't have to, but it sure as hell would be the right, nice thing to do. Build a couple hotels, so all of a sudden, people are saying, in downtown Wood Sockit, which would allow all these wonderful restaurant opportunities, where people, I mean, people travel to Providence, I'm almost done, almost done here, I promise, people travel to Providence, and if you, and I spent, I get to know a lot of people who travel into Providence for a variety of reasons. And they come into town, and the first thing they do is, and I'm talking not just at Will's Ave, they go to Chalkstone, they go to Broad, they go to Ivy Street on the, the up, the not-so-fashionable side of the east side, because they're all yelping their way through the great unknown restaurants of America. Let's give those people that opportunity to do that in Wood Sockit.
Yep.
And then, that money stays in town, and job opportunities are created for people to work in town, and management positions are created within these variety of organizations. Am I, am I, am I nuts?
No, not at all, not at all. I mean, and that's, I think, I mean, specifically citing the restaurant scene there, I mean, like, there are a lot of really good restaurants in Wood Sockit, and they are under traveled. And I think that's, I mean, there's the very complex economic and political issues that have led to this, but, I mean, I think, yeah, yeah, you're absolutely right that, like, if, and this touches on a lot of different issues, because I think if Wood Sockit, one, did a better job of marketing ourselves, not letting the rest of the state, doesn't, people who don't go to Wood Sockit, define us, I think that that's a big problem, because Wood Sockit is actually a really, really great town, a city. And, two, I think you're absolutely right, that if, that there would be so much value to more reinvestment in mechanisms that would bring people into Wood Sockit, that would keep people there, that people would lodge there, and that they would, they would get more of an opportunity to experience all of our local, our local businesses, our local culture, you know. And there is some work that's being done by nonprofits in the city, like, I'm on the Wood Sockit Collaborative, and we do, we arrange events where that, that do attract people from outside of the city into the city to this, to whatever the event may be, and then they go eat, or they go shop, or whatever, you know. And I mean, that's, the idea of that, which, this is on a much smaller scale than what you're describing, but the idea is, you're creating repeat customers, you're sort of cleaning the record, you know, so to speak, of Wood Sockit for people outside of the city. And, and I think, I think that there's a lot of good that could be done if that were done more frequently and by, through different avenues, like you described.
Right. And because ultimately, this state has become so focused on its urban core, and by that I mean Providence-Pawtucket, Grantson-Warwick, that we forget about the incredible ATM that Aquinic Island is, we forget about the challenges towns like Wood Sockit, and to a certain degree, Rhode Island's face, who have largely, and this, again, I want to be careful here, this is not a shot at anybody, but with all the financial activity that's been generated, has largely been left behind, you know, simply because of where the state chooses to invest or not invest. As a libertarian, I don't want them to invest anywhere. I want them to just make it easier, all right, through eliminating unfunded mandates, ease the tax burden statewide, so that folks in Wood Sockit simply have more money to spend locally. Because people from Wood Sockit don't really like to leave Wood Sockit, do they? And I say that with love. I mean, I live in Cumberland, and I'll say for, I'll be blunt, Cumberland has no soul. Cumberland is, I think the term is exurb, I, there's no pretty downtown, you know, we don't have a stadium theater, all right. There's no hub of central activity, it's suburban sprawl on steroids. It's a bedroom community. Yeah, there's some great little spots and things like that, but you guys have it downtown.
Yeah. Wood Sockit, and yeah, that's, I think you described it really well, like, that we do, we have a soul. And I think that that's probably one of the reasons that our cultural depression of the last couple of decades is so heavily tied to the economic depression that we're feeling, because it's like, we, there are a lot of people who remember when Wood Sockit was doing really well, and where, like, it was the place to be, to shop, to eat, to live. And, and they've, people, families who've been there for a long time, and, and, you know, and families who've moved there and who know the history, like, there's a lot of people who moved there because of the history, that's something that I've found canvassing and stuff. They, they, they see what Wood Sockit was, and now have, what all of these complex social, economic, political issues have made it into, you know, into the current day. And it's, like, that soul still exists, and the bones are still there, is what we say, you know. There's, there's good people, good architecture, good potential, and, but it's just this inability to sort of, I'll honestly say, it's the inability of the municipal government to get out of its own way, in a lot of cases, and...
What, now, there was, and again, we're not getting into personalities here, so we're not going to name names, but there was a brief spurt of energy when the administration of, and I'll mention a former mayor, Ms. Menard, if I have it correctly, mercifully came to an end. And I say mercifully, in my opinion, all right. And there was this hope that the current mayor had strong political connections, was actually a member of leadership in the General Assembly, touted her economic bones, was going to do, create this resurgence, and the first area of challenge, if you will, because for many of us who come from Cumberland, Rentham, the Rhode Island side, is Diamond Hill Road. And Diamond Hill Road was eviscerated by the construction in North Smithfield. It's just, you just literally, and this is why this nonsense has to stop, because you ripped the retail soul out of Wood Sockit, and just as if it was a gigantic crane, dropped it into North Smithfield.
On top of an aquifer, by the way.
Right, right.
Destroying, destroying the local environment there.
Right. Essentially because of tax rates.
Yep.
Am I oversimplifying?
Not really. And, yeah, no, no, you're not oversimplifying. And there was, there was a lot of, obviously a lot of opposition within Wood Sockit for, of that happening, but it wasn't enough. And it was, so we're not, we're not talking about opponents.
Yeah.
Okay, so, nevermind.
So, so, you had this vision, the mayor had the vision, it was, you know, her first, you know, you had the 100-day thing, it was going to be, you know, Wood Sockit's open for business. Has that happened?
Not really. And I mean, and I'll just preface this by giving credit to the mayor, I mean, the streetlights had been, had been, you know, at a minimum were off for a while before that, and she was able to find some resource in the budget to be able to turn a lot of them back on, and that's good. And, you know, there's, they've been fixing some roads. I'm going to, I'm going to give credit where credit is due, there has been some improvement, some small amount of improvement, especially like in the last, like, this, this most recent term, like, the last six months. But, no. In terms of, in terms of the regrowth of the economy, there've been, there've been some people who've been trying really hard, people who were on the council, who are not anymore, people like Melissa Murray, Garrett Tieri, who I'm, both, who I know well.
Right. And I've had the opportunity to meet Melissa, she's a local business owner.
Yes.
Right. And so, here's someone, again, to her credit, now she's on the State House, you know, to her credit, has, not only lives in a town like you, but invests in the town.
Yes.
These are people, you, like you and her, I mean, Wood Sockit is your, is your life.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, I mean, a lot of the same people who are involved in all these profit boards, and who really, like, there is this vision that exists for the redevelopment of Main Street, and the recreation of Wood Sockit's sort of center of commerce. And unfortunately, it's when, like, there's, there's this, there's a culture, a political culture in Wood Sockit that prevents good ideas from happening if the right person doesn't have them, or if the wrong person has them.
Right.
And that's, and the divisiveness that exists in the city government is one of the big reasons why a lot of good things can't happen. Good, good things that either of the camps may have.
Right.
Or somebody outside of the camps. There's just this, like, there's this visceral hatred of the other. And, and that means that we sacrifice truly good ideas for economic development from either side as a result of petty personal differences.
And at this point, you guys really need to, like, move beyond that, because it's a crisis now.
Yes, we do. We obviously do.
To the mayor's credit, she's been able to duct-tape the city together for a number of years. I can't imagine she anticipated the challenges she faced. The local media culture is somewhat challenged, it appears, you know, and these are my comments, not yours, but again, you've got these radio, you know, we can call it Wood Sockit Radio, who are just beat the crap out of each other. I mean, and, and, I, holy cow.
Yeah. And I will say that I really respect a number of the radio personalities in the city, both stations. And I've gotten to know some of them even more since I've been running, and I do respect them. But there are other well-known personalities that seem to have no desire other than to just continue pushing down the city, and making it appear the worst it can possibly appear to everybody from outs, to everybody outside of Wood Sockit.
Right. Optics matter.
Optics do matter. And, and listening to, we're not naming names, okay, listening to these, these very small number, actually, of individuals talking, it's really, really...
Safety director with the town. One of them used to be the safety director for the mail.
Yeah.
Because if the, if the state, the entire state, the culture looks down on the community unfairly, you don't even have a chance to define yourself. So, talk to me about this vision, then, of Main Street, Wood Sockit. What, kind of develop on that. What, in a perfect, let's put aside the differences, let's put aside the personalities, and say that, in the next session of the town council, there's this renewed vigor to pursue this. So, kind of define for me what they see as the vision for the town going forward.
So, so the work that had been started was the idea of the downtown overlay district, which encompasses a lot of things, but the idea of a lot more mixed-use development, where you have residences, like, like this area of Providence, really, right?
Right.
And, and this actually, you know, this area is cited a lot by people who have forward-thinking views about what Wood Sockit could be, like Westminster and all that.
Right. Because ultimately, I think we all realize that cities are no longer places of commerce, they're places of entertainment.
Yeah, yeah.
And you have to, if people live in, live in a community, literally live here, like the lofts across the street, and take, as a result, take ownership of the community, there's a renewed civic spirit and a renewed identity that comes with that.
Yes.
So, what, if you can break it down, I mean, you know, when I think, I think of social app, I think of, you know, where the registry used to be, where the registry is, where the, you know, give me, you know, the stadium theater area, obviously, where do they want to start from, and give me, give me a literal portrayal.
Well, there isn't really a they, like, there's like, there's not, there's really a nonexistent vision right now, because the people who were on the council who had this vision are no longer in that capacity, and, like, they're doing things outside. But, so, I mean, I think, at least speaking from my own experience, right, my own ideas and vision, it extends just beyond just Main Street. But, I mean, the idea, the idea is that we, there's a lot of red tape in the city where it doesn't need to be, that makes it hard for, for people to, entrepreneurs, local entrepreneurs to open up small businesses. And so, I think doing a better job of streamlining the process, especially through the planning board, you know, we need to have a lot less politicking there. And, and I think, I think finding ways to streamline the process of starting a business in the city would do a huge service to, to, to a lot of the local entrepreneurs who would start a business if not for being put through the rig, right?
Right.
And so, that's one thing. I think that we need to do a good job of repurposing old buildings, especially ones that are off the tacky rules, that are owned by the city, or bank, or whatever, including the old mills, which, some of which are pretty close to code. And I think we need to, we need to do a really good assessment of what needs to be done to bring them up to code, or what's just beyond repair, and, and actually start doing things like artist's lofts, and changing the zoning laws to allow a lot of these more creative uses of space that we see in... a lot of these more creative uses of space that we see in places like Pawtucket that have really helped to to, I mean, like, so there's a group that I'm involved in Climate Action Rhode Island. And we have a space at five forty-five Main Street in Pawtucket, which is that one of one of those the repurposed mill buildings. And it there's breweries there, there's a flower, I mean, there's a plant store, there's all sorts, all sorts of office spaces, there's a chiropractor, there's it's it's an awesome use of space, right? And.
Do you share space with Fang?
We don't share space, it's the same building, yes.
Yeah, right, I have a Fang space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so and so like that concept is something that Woon Sockit would really benefit from if we could actually sort of start creating spaces like that or at least make it easier for people who want to create spaces. And there was, there was one called Le Melon. Unfortunately, there was some issues with the inspection of the building, not really sure, it's not really clear whose fault it was. But unfortunately, it ended up being that like she had this beautiful artist space established. And unfortunately, there was there was some issues that.
Electrical code issues, right?
Yes, electrical code issues that that the building was not usable at that point. And so and that was, it was really devastating. Melissa Shop was actually in there originally. And so, but that idea, and I mean, that woman's idea was amazing. And like that idea more broadly is something that I really, I really think we need to do more of in the city. Because you see like art and 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 other other, you know, elements of culture and and music and and events, like these things can become economic drivers themselves. And they can become things that attract more businesses and more people into a city because they make the city. And one, they actually, they're producing something, they're, you know, they're they're businesses themselves. And then they make the city more pleasant to be in, like you said, it creates more of more of the entertainment value. I also think we need to do a much better job, like we, I mean, Woon Sockit is poised to implement lots and lots of renewable energy responsibly, not cutting down the forest to do that. But I mean, on city buildings, making it much easier because it is kind of difficult to put them on on residence, like private residences. And so making it easier to do that, I mean, like, if we really put our minds to it, we could probably like completely decarbonize our energy, meaning like, you know, offset our energy with with production, which obviously, in terms of climate change, that's a very important thing for us to be doing within the next couple of years. But also, it would mean that depending on on who owns it or whatever, or how we're doing it, either the city is having offsets to their energy expenses and or we're creating space for for businesses, like businesses that come in and and have, you know, people, people employed from Woon Sockit and or where, you know, people are saving money by putting them on on their own buildings. And so like that, that in itself would be, there's no drawback to that as long as we're not cutting down the forest to build solar panels because it's again, it's it's the ability to produce something that literally doesn't take any additional land. And and so and obviously, not for climate activists.
Right.
So the climate is incredibly important. Yes, yes, the climate is incredibly important part of all of that. I also think we need to do, we need to just protect the local environment for the sake of the local environment. So we can't, there was a proposal made as part of this race that we would cut down the woods in East Woon Sockit and build luxury housing, which is not a good idea because we shouldn't cut down the woods and we also shouldn't drive up housing prices in Woon Sockit and put a bunch of people on the street.
Well, and 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 the problem there is that we, as a state, we constantly incentivize the construction. I'm a free market guy. All right, and as free market guys, I get, when you incentivize a particular style of housing using essentially publicly funded tax breaks, you disincentivize the type of housing that the marketplace would naturally go to. And in this case, you know, the marketplace, if if allowed to operate independently, I'm convinced would build moderately priced housing because that's what the marketplace in Woon Sockit is screaming for.
Yeah.
Now, you've you've got a real issue with slum lords in certain parts of the town. And you've got, you know, and yet, at the same token, simply shutting down those buildings will crucify the housing stock that's affordable to people. There's a happy balance that can be achieved where people have options to rent or buy quality housing that's been geared towards the market conditions of the community that you're building it in. As opposed to this stupidity of Providence where the city is broke, yet we build luxury housing and no one pays any damn taxes.
Yep, yep.
I mean, what are we doing?
Yeah.
I mean, somebody at some point, listen, I'm I'm a minarch, I believe in eliminating government. And the best way to eliminate taxes is to eliminate the government that's leeching off it. But until we get to that point, let's just create an open market where everybody, because the market dictates, pays their piece of the action. That it's it's really that, it's really that simple. And yet, we 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 overcomplicate things through cronyism everywhere in the state. Has anyone given thought, you know, we, there's there, communities, I mean, I travel a lot in this state. I'm all over the place for a lot of reasons. I have a couple of jobs. West Warwick, neighborhoods like Arctic. Central Woon Sockit. And particularly, two come to mind. In all fairness, certain parts of Newport, because Newport is not mansions and lollipops. You look at towns, you look at some of the the far western towns, creating sales tax enterprise zones where they pay reduced or little sales tax on retail. Worked wonderfully in New Jersey in the eighties. Cities like Elizabeth, which were a Woon Sockit for the times. Eliminating taxes accomplishes a couple of things. There's increased, simply there's just more money around for people to spend. And you bring people into communities, businesses of all types, not just the select few by our governor, not just the friends of the Commerce Corps, but you attract businesses of all types. If in fact, if you were to take Woon Sockit and Arctic, certain parts of Pawtucket and CF, you know, Lower Cumberland, these are just in a broad street and 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 the deepest heart of South Providence, and simply eliminate the sales tax on restaurants.
So so that, I mean, that there's some state preemption to that? So that would that would have to be something like where the city is recompensating those those businesses for for the the net amount of sales taxes, right?
Well, I mean, I just just, I I want to keep it simple.
Okay.
Have Ms. Melissa up there and say, all right, we want to create a, we want to create a law that says these neighborhoods don't have to pay, I mean, Buddy Cianti did it with the Artists District. Where he, there was an entire part of town where you bought art and not to pay sales tax. Obviously, that requires the state legislature.
Yeah.
But 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 isn't that paying less taxes for everybody in the area? Not just the connected few, but less tax for everybody, eliminating the minimum tax so that small businesses don't have to bring, come up with four or five hundred bucks right off the bat, just simply to get up, simply to be legal. Isn't that the way to create a thriving market in in a city like Woon Sockit? And give it some of the, you know, give it a a fairer standing with North Smithfield? I mean, wouldn't it be fun to see some of the businesses in North Smithfield? We've backed.
Yeah. I mean, that certainly seems like a something to look into, yeah.
I, you know, I, you're you're looking to sponsor organic investment in a community. You know, not, in the case of CBS, pay essentially someone to just land and operate nearly scot-free. I mean, let's, let's, let's look at that number again. A couple million dollars for a sophisticated retail merchandising environment in terms of warehouses, corporate headquarters. And I don't know if there's a number of assessed on it, but I mean, how many people from Woonie work at CBS?
It's a pretty small number. I I don't know off the top of my head, but it's, yeah.
There's probably more people working at the.
Very small percentage of up there.
There's probably more people working at the local CBS than there are working at CBS.
I mean, and that's like, I I I have a sort of philosophical problem with the idea of a pilot program in general, in like tax stabilization agreements, because it's doing a disservice to the local businesses because it's like, well, so they don't deserve to have, they like, I mean, you either find ways to lower taxes for all business, all property taxes for businesses or you don't discriminate against the small locally-owned businesses
Right.
who employ ten people or twenty people, you know, at because like it just, it's it, yeah, I I don't want to get too much into this because I wasn't, I wasn't really, I was very young when they worked out for, no, it's been thirty years, I wasn't even alive when they, when they worked out the agreement. But it's not, it's it's not something that like, it doesn't seem okay. It's it's not okay. And philosophically, and it does, the agreement expires in twenty twenty-seven, so it's not something that can really, I mean, if if the opportunity came up to renegotiate it, I would certainly, I would certainly want to do that. It's not something I think I can make happen, especially not as a lone, as a lone actor.
No, no, I understand, but but essentially, you know, this is going to come around in a period, short period. Cities like Woon Sockit have to begin to educate folks now as to the realities of economic development. Because like anything, there are crosswinds. You know, economic development has the potential, as has happened in certain parts of Providence, and certainly certain parts of Pawtucket, to create gentrification.
Yeah.
Right? So and and the problem is, is a lot of folks want to want to use rent control or an issue like that to to control that, which is the worst thing you can do because you 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 crucify, again, eviscerate is the term that, you know, Clickbait tries to use, eviscerate, right? The housing market because, again, you've got to give landlords an opportunity to make make a profit. Rent control kills that, rent control killed the New York City apartment market for for a generation. But on the same token, things are so bad right now that if you continue to give tax advantages to the few, you know, my opposition to the Pawtucket Red Sox Stadium, I believe, was a principled one. And it was simply if for towns in the Blackstone Valley, you would have a second after the casino. State monopoly, state economic bomb dropped in the middle of the community, which would attract a significant part of the entertainment disposable income for people in the Blackstone Valley. And by definition, it doesn't, it's capital flight, it doesn't create additional disposable expenditures so that people can then, after the game, go have have fish and chips or, you know, whatever that crazy meat thing you you guys call it, dynamite, you know, it doesn't create that. It it takes away money.
Yeah.
And then that money leaves the economy because typically, state-sponsored organizations like that discriminate against the local community economically. So by creating some enterprise zones of some types where everyone who goes there, not just a few, everyone who goes there pays less taxes. As a libertarian, I can, I can stomach that and see opportunities for people at every level, including the local Thai restaurant, the local, you know, sub shop, the local computer store entrepreneur, the local figure-it-all-out, having a local hardware store come back downtown as opposed to everybody going to North Smithfield. I, to me, that's that's what's going to happen. I don't know any other way to create economies other than organically. Now, entertainment-wise, you know, you look at organizations like the stadium. Is the city gotten behind them enough? I mean, is that a success story from your perspective from the city or not? Because entertainment brings people downtown.
Yeah, the the impression that I'm under, and I'll just say, I'm not in the in crowd in the slightest, so I don't really, yeah, I I don't hear from basically anybody in the municipal government. So but and under, the impression that I'm under is that not, now, the stadium is not always treated very well. But, yeah.
And consistently, that's been the one organization that has stuck it out. You know, bringing quality entertainment.
Yeah.
Family entertainment for a number of years now. You know, and and bringing entertainment to a community which doesn't really have much other than a, you know, a particular jazz club, doesn't have a lot of other other options.
Yeah.
Have you reached out to them yet or have you, you know, what are your efforts going to be now in terms of campaign? Who are you reaching out to?
So I mean, it's it's mostly just direct voter contact, like, you know, that's that, but, you know, I actually think it's a good idea for me to, for me to talk to the the stadium nonprofit because I think, yeah, I I think that, I mean, it would be, it's probably a pretty important part of 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 the economic development that I want to do. And so, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So Diamond Hill Road. And I know it's tough because when you're camp, you're activist looking in, they're not going out of their way to say, hey, you know, Alex, I hear you're running, let's sit down and I'll give you a briefing on everything that's going on.
Yeah.
That's probably not happening anytime soon, is it?
No, not at this stage.
Are you, I don't want to mention, are you running against an incumbent?
Well, so he was on the council for sixteen years, got off in sixteen to run against Mayor Baldelli Hunt, and then ran for council and lost this past election. So, yeah.
Time maybe for a change?
I would say so.
The last, and I'm not demeaning anyone's personal efforts or their their investment in time, I'm gonna say it was, keep that in good faith. But the last sixty years haven't been particularly kind to
No.
to Woon Sockit, I think.
And, yeah, and I think I think there's, there's a lot of, there have been a lot of mounting problems over that period of time and that have like, the the combination of a sort of compulsive intent to cut taxes without understanding what we need to do in order to support doing that and then not actually doing a lot of good economic development, has led to the situation where the teachers couldn't have a contract for an entire year and, you know, and and all of the other economic awfulness that that Woon Sockit's been facing. And I think, I think there's, there's a big confluence of factors, but but certainly, the municipal government over the last few decades has not, has not done a good job of 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 making things, like, they, they, their decisions have led to to what Woon Sockit is now.
So what what is the status of Diamond Hill Road? Now, you've got.
It's pretty empty.
And and our local, the folks who own those malls, are they aggressively trying to get tenants or is it just kind of a steady state of failure right now?
It seems like a steady state of failure. That's, that's, that's sort of the the situation. I think there, there have been a few, let's see, so Trampoline Park moved into the old Shaw's probably two years ago now. And Job Lot closed in one location and moved into the old Walmart, as well as, which was kind of cool, Tractor Supply moved in, even though it's not locally owned, but
Right.
it's kind of, you know, it's agriculturally based enough that it makes me happy. So, but, yeah, I mean, overall, yeah, it's it's pretty, I mean, Diamond Hill was pretty decimated by by the Donald Lynch. And, yeah, and I think there's a lot of, a lot of work that needs to be done and.
Because the the businesses that are in North Smithfield, they're all national businesses. They're all overwhelming presences. I mean, you're talking about Aldi's and a Walmart, which again, is going to try to take the jobs into North Smithfield of the traditional retail food sector. I mean, I I hope I'm not overstating, and I don't mean this to demean Woon Sockit, but Woon Sockit is a food desert.
Oh, yeah. I think I I heard the, I mean, there's the little definition of a food desert, which has something to do with a certain, like, having to walk a certain distance in order to get a complete diet. I don't know the exact, but Woon Sockit is the site of a very large percentage of the food deserts in the state.
Right.
And like, meaning like area locales where you can't walk and get a complete diet. And I mean, like, having grown up in the city, I just kind of view that as normal. But I mean, we had one grocery store, Shaw's, which closed a few years ago. Oh, maybe more than a few years ago.
Yeah, it's been a few years.
Yeah, it's probably five or six years. And, yeah, and I mean, and there's not, there's one farmer's market in Woon Sockit, which is open for a few hours, one day a week just during the summer. But but in reality, it is people, and and this actually goes into this concept of like health inequity where people, I mean, Woon Sockit has a lot of poverty and poor people and and areas where there's a lot of people of color, they, there's obviously, there's the tendency for more food deserts in those areas and and that there's the disparity in their access to a healthy diet, and that's a big problem.
No, and I don't doubt for a moment that the, that a number of the large food retailers have effectively redlined Woon Sockit. Because the next issue, of course, is Riptre, as we say in Rhode Island. I'm particularly frustrated with Riptre because of, in poorer communities, the number of folks who have to avail themselves of expensive ride-sharing services to get to work. You know, as opposed to, you know.
Having a well-functioning public.
Right, I mean, I mean.
Transportation sector, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, listen, I'm a libertarian, I don't believe in public just about anything. But right now, we're writing a huge check to Riptre every year to subsidize it, yet when you look at the most marginalized, you know, and they're quite proud of their service to Quonset Point, I'm not thinking a lot of folks, and again, this is not a shot at people. I'm not thinking a lot of folks in Woonie are going down to Quonset Point every year. So you're effectively subsidizing mass transportation for people of middle or above-average incomes. And at the same time, you know, you talk about a food desert, I would call Woon Sockit a transportation desert.
Yeah.
Because.
That's a good way to put it.
Right, and because ultimately, you've got folks who are and and hard, you know, and again, the term is working poor. Not a shot, but you've got folks who are working in home healthcare and healthcare entry-level healthcare positions who are making twelve or thirteen dollars an hour, if that, and spending two hours a day of their salary on simply getting to work.
Yep.
While we subsidize Riptre.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there, there is a single bus line that goes around Woon Sockit. And there's one that goes from Woon Sockit to Providence and back and stops a few other places. Like, it stops a few places along the route in Woon Sockit. So Woon Sockit's like nine square miles and and like. So, Wood Sackett's like nine square miles, and, and like 42,000 people.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty big disservice to not, I mean, to, to not be able to just hop on a bus within a two-minute walk of anywhere you are. And I, and that's, that's something that's, it's pretty important to me, I mean, urban planning, more, more broadly, something that really should be, that should be a higher focus of the city government, because making sure that we do find ways for, like, to make Wood Sackett more easily walkable, bikeable, and public transport capable.
Right, and, and you look at downtown Wood Sackett, and it has been engineered, traffic-wise, for people to get through there as quickly as possible.
Yep, yep.
You know, something, you know, one of the worst things that can ever happen, I'm a, I'm certainly not educated in it, but I'm, I'm an urban geek, you know, parallel parking destroys small towns. The reason why is because you, there's no traffic coming. Angle of parking slows people down, and makes them, quite frankly, statistically, more likely to stop. And, and if they stop, guess what they're gonna do?
Eat.
Yeah!
Well, and, and I was actually talking to John Burard, who, the director of Clean Water Action, who lives in Wood Sackett, and he was telling me about some research that actually trees on the side of the road accomplish something very similar, and obviously also clean the air. So, that, that's something that I, I think we really need to look into, is planting more trees, because there's a subconscious effect where it does cause people to drive more slowly, and maybe these two good effects combined would, would really do a better job of, of, of making Wood Sackett a more, more of a, sort of, destination-traveling area, you know, like where...
Well, you need, you know, the walking cities, by definition, create economic activity. As someone who doesn't live in Wood Sackett, but, you know, in anticipation of, you and I spending quality time together, I've been there a bunch of times lately, just a couple, you know, during the day, and I, the entire city of Wood Sackett, at this point, appears engineered to get people in and out as quickly as possible, without any danger of them spending any real money there.
That's, yeah, that's a pretty stock way to put it, but yeah.
You know?
I also, I also wanna bring this to another thing, which is, obviously, you know, the climate and the environment are very important to me, as they should be to anybody. But, that design also means that the albedo, which is the, the, the heat, like, capacity of the city, is much higher. And so, in cities like Wood Sackett, as the climate changes, it's, they're going to suffer far worse under heatwaves than forested areas, or, or towns where there's a lot more trees. And, and that's gonna be a big problem, because I mean, we, there's, there's a deadly heatwave, I think, in India last week. Many dozen people died, and, like, this is, and so, I mean, that speaks...
Oh, I mean, you know, I mean, cities, environments in cities have, the, and, and this is where I'll make some of my friends insane, but if you, there are studies that prove fairly conclusively that climatic conditions in certain parts of the Middle East have exacerbated, essentially, terrorism. Because you, you've compacted people into cities, which by definition are less livable, and you've created urban blight, you, you know, the economy has suffered because of a whole number of reasons, and you've got people compacted into these cities with no hope. You think good things are gonna come of that?
That's an interesting take.
I'm not thinking they are. And, and again, I, I, I believe that the market, the free market is a force to be reckoned with, when allowed to operate as a free market, and can be, and many of our human conditions can be self-corrected. That's an area where you and I could probably debate on hours. I know Mr. Bell, and particularly, is appalled by when I mention things like that. But, he humors me, and he's nice to come on the show.
You two probably have a much, a much longer relationship, where he can be appalled over the years.
For, sorry, yeah, I think, I, I think I humor him. Or no, he humors, whatever, I think he finds me humorous. Kind of like an odd kind of thing to keep, pet to keep, friend to keep, huh? But, again, is, well, first of all, does Wood Sackett have a city planner now, or is there...
As far as, I know, we still haven't hired one, and that's, that's, we have a director of planning, but we don't have a city planner. And I've read fair bits of our city plan, and I, I, it's pretty good, but, like, the, yeah, I, I think it's, it's, it's a, it's a department where Wood Sackett's been pretty poor in for, for some time now. We had, we had a, I'm not gonna name names, but, we had a pretty good city planner. Actually, we had a few good city planners a few years ago, but we haven't, it's been, it's, it's kind of gone downhill in that time.
Right, and, and, and again, this is where, if you've got organizations that are living for free in a town, and they're not willing to contribute their expertise either, you know, and, and I'm gonna, listen, Google, your good friend Dave Fisher and I once, Googled CVS, and, what was the type of corporate plea bargain that takes place? The name escapes me right now, but if you Googled CVS, and, and, you know, CVS is a challenge company ethically, you know, I mean, I'm gonna say that. You know, if you look through the roles, and the years, and the scandals, I don't know, maybe it's time for them to suck it up, or go someplace else, because quite frankly, I, I don't know. I, I, I see them as abdicating their responsibilities in the community, which is simply to pay their own bills.
And, and that's, I mean, I would definitely be on the side, fall on the side of wanting them to stay in Wood Sackett, but I, I do think that we need to renegotiate that, that program. And, I mean, I, I, an idea that was proposed to me, and that I, I think is a very good one, is where if, you know, increasing their taxes, like, you know, getting rid of the pilot program, or renegotiating it, to, and, and effectively increasing their taxes, but allowing them to pay some of that in donations to nonprofits located within the city, I think that, that would be a huge step in the right direction. And I think, and I think, I'm pretty confident that, that we could work something out in good faith with them, to, to, at, at the time when that's being renegotiated, to, to better, better the community, without incentivizing them leaving, because at the end of the day, they're a corporation that's beholden to their shareholders, right? And if they do something, like, there, there is an amount of money of increase in taxes that it's going to take to make them leave, and below that, they can't justify it to their shareholders.
Right.
And so, we have to, there's a lot of scare tactics that go on, primarily used by the man who negotiated the deal at the beginning, who is now a well-known personality, who, they use, him and his, his friends use scare tactics against anybody who suggests this, and so nobody really wants to suggest it, but realistically, it's, it's, it would be good for the city to, to, explore renegotiating that.
Or at least, like you said, explore them investing in, or attracting investment to the city. I, you know, I often use the example of, we've got a national profile. The amount of growth it would take to move the needle in Wood Sackett is so small relatively, relative to the greater market, that it's, it's a crime that it hasn't happened already. You know, we had a governor who, you know, at least for the first few years of an administration, was intimately, intimately connected with the Obama administration, and yet did nothing to, I believe, use the bully pulpit of the federal government to bring companies like Google into a Providence or a Wood Sackett. You know, when, when you're at that level, you can call a meeting, and people will show up. You know, instead, she's hell-bent on, you know, political campaign contributions from companies like Invenergy, you know, which...
Yep.
Yeah, which, yeah, so what's CEO, how much did he give? Yeah. You know, it's, for all the money we spend on economic development in the state, it seems like a, a significant part of it is picking winners and losers, and sending them gifts in the mail.
Yeah, yep, and Wood Sackett as a municipality is not really different in that regard. I think there's, it's called the Friends and Family Program, and...
Yeah.
That's, that's, it's a problem.
Right. Now, what is, they talked to me about the structure, we've got a few minutes left. Talk to me about the structure of Wood Sackett. You go to city council there.
Yes, we have, we have a seven-member city council, it's entirely out-large, which, you know, is, is actually problematic for a couple of reasons, I think, but we don't have to get into that today.
Well, no, 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 explain that to me, because I, I was surprised by that, the first time I heard that, you know, four or five years ago.
Yeah, it was changed relatively recently, I don't remember exactly when, but...
I mean, how do you not have, I mean, the point is to represent neighborhoods.
Yeah, you'd think so.
Yeah, and, and so, you give a representative of one of the more challenged areas, you know, equal power on the council to advocate for his, you know, I mean, does that create adversity? Yes. Does that create competition? Yes. Okay, it's politics. You know?
Yeah, I mean...
And, and so, how, why did they get away from that? Why?
I don't know what the reasoning was getting away from it. I mean, I have my ideas, and, to be honest, like, the existence of, of an entirely out-large council, especially in a city with such racial diversity, and with so much poverty, and so, a huge majority of the people who are, what did you, what was the phrase you used? Working poor?
Yeah.
That, I mean, it's, it's, it's a racist and classist forum for, and that's the first time I've said that in a public forum, but I, it's true. I mean, it's, 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 it's not right, because, I mean, it, what ends up, what ends up happening is instead of having representation from around the city, there's just, you know, the same area, and, and I'm, you know, I'm from the area that a big number of, of the city council is from. My family does not have money, we bought the house, my grandparents bought the house a long time ago. But, that area does have, have money, and, and it's just basically infighting within that area, is, is what we see.
Giving up the spoils.
Yeah, yeah, and, and it's not right.
Yeah, because, you know, I, you're, you're gonna have conflicting economic interests. That's the definition of a city.
Yeah.
I mean, Providence, you know, just look outside this window, you've got a downtown section, you've got the Tony East Side, and you've got the severe challenges faced by folks in the south part of the city. You need someone on the south part of the city to be, I mean, listen, politics is horse trading. Folks find that disgusting, but, you know, it is. If, if, if someone in that community doesn't have any power whatsoever, then of course you're gonna disassociate them, no.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, and I mean, you look at, you look at the abysmal voter turnout in Wood Sackett, and obviously, there are a lot of socioeconomic factors that, that go into that, but deliberate disenfranchised, or deliberate indirect disenfranchisement
Right.
has had to have played a role in that, over the last couple of decades, and that's a problem. It's, it's, I, I'm very bothered by it, and the more doors I knock, and the more people I talk to who do feel this deep disenfranchisement, the more, the more problem I have with that.
Now, do you self-identify as a progressive?
I am not running under a party label. I believe in progressive policies. Honestly, I'm not running under a party label, but also, I'm called a, I'm, I'm called a lot worse. But, you know, I'm, I'm called a progressive by, by people in the, in the city government, so if that's the label they wanna give me, fine.
Is that being used as sort of a pokeman?
Yeah, but it also doesn't work. Like, nobody cares. So, I mean, like, you know, whatever.
Interesting. How much, now, you, you've got a life beyond this, how much time are you investing right now, in terms of the campaign?
All of it outside of work.
You live and breathe each other.
Yeah, knocking doors, going to events, talking to people, learning a lot of people's struggles in the community. That's, that's my entire life, other than work right now. And I love it most of the time, and then sometimes, listening to the local radio, it makes me, you know, a little, it hurts a little bit, but, what's that about me? But, yeah.
You're a child of the community, if you will. You've lived here your whole life, you've invested untold voluntary hours in the community. It's for that.
Yeah, I tend to think that.
I mean, you know, it, it's, you know, here, here, the biggest problem in the city is you've got a club that runs things. And you've got a sit, and the problem is, is that it's not working on any level
No, it's not.
across the board.
Yeah.
And it's fascinating, because, you know, every now and then I get to appear on a show called The Lively Experiment, and Mr. Hummel was, was filling in this weekend at NPR, and he pointed out that by the end of the show, if someone's so exasperated, and to say, you don't like it, if you're that upset, why don't you just leave? And I finally said to them, how dare you conflate my frustration with, because of your inadequacies, the generational failure that you represent, with some type of loyalty of the community? The very reason I ain't going anywhere is because of you.
That's a really great way to put it.
I mean, you know, the madder you make me, the more I'm staying.
Yeah.
And, again, I've, I've seen a number of people invest a lot of time into challenged communities, whether it be Monica in South Providence, or you in Woody, you know, and you start out with environmental issues, and then you see the environmental racism that takes place, and then you see the economic racism that takes place, and it just pisses you off more and more.
Yeah.
And, of course, these folks are going to attempt to diminish your efforts, because if they can diminish your efforts in the eyes of people, they can make, make, poke fun at you, make you the object of humor, then they feel they're gonna define you.
You know what, though? I sleep very well at night, because I have probably talked to more members of our community than the sum... I'm gonna remove Dave Soucy from this, because I like Dave Soucy a lot, and I think he really cares about the community, the rest of the council, and the mayor, I've probably talked, I've spent more time talking to the members of our community than the rest of them combined. And I, that's a completely unfounded claim, but just, the, the point, the exaggeration is the point. But, and I am confident that the things I'm talking about, and the, and the things that I think Wood Sackett needs to do to, to, to really make people's lives better in our, in our community, are the things people want. Are the, they're, people are on my side, and that showed in the election, and so, if the, what did you call them? The, the, you, you, the camp, I call them the camps, but you, you call them the, like, the good, if the good old boys' clubs don't want to, don't wanna get on board with that, fine.
Do you think the 52% was a wake-up call?
I sure as heck hope so.
I mean, yeah, I, I get the sense they're running a little scared.
Yeah, they are.
Because, you know, the first cracks in the wall take the longest to occur, but once they do, it's a sight to the old young man, it's a sight to behold, the watch it come crumbling down. So, how can people get involved in your campaign?
Well, so, I mean, we have, you can, so, my email address is kithis41socket@gmail.com. My cell phone number's 401-523-5547. You can contact me by other of those. We have a website that's in the process of being created, but it is live now, kithis41socket.com. And, you know, we're, we're obviously always fundraising, and, and we, you know, there's lots of volunteer opportunities, because I knock doors basically every day, and lots of time on the weekends, but volunteers knocking doors is really, really useful as well, in spreading the message. And so, anybody who wants to get involved, just shoot me a text, or call, or, or email me there. And I, I have a Facebook page as well, obviously, you know, it's just, you can go to facebook.com/alexkithisri, that's K-I-T-H-E-S.
I shared that with the...
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Shared that, your promotion.
And, yeah, and, and you, yeah, I have a, I mean, my Twitter's @AGKithis, my Instagram is @kithis41socket, I think. I don't use Instagram as much as I should, but, you know, yeah.
Same here.
I'm, I'm on the, I'm on the social media.
No, and I guess what I find fascinating is that, despite being labeled as a progressive Democrat, your focus clearly is on creating a business environment where people can succeed.
Well, I think on the municipal level, I, I think those are kind of the same thing. I mean, wanting people in the community to be able to, to have, have these opportunities for themselves, to be able to create something, and, 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 and create, and us as a municipality, creating the conditions where, where people can be lifted out of poverty, and, and, you know, and, I mean, yeah, I, I think those are basically more than the same, and...
But it's almost, there's a slight touch of libertarianism there.
Sure.
But, you know, understanding fundamentally that government forces, when used inappropriately, are a barrier to economic growth, and a barrier to personal liberties and freedoms, is fundamental to our movement as a libertarian. The, you know, we have something called the non-aggression principle, where we probably, we, we basically swear an oath that we will not use force or coercion for our own personal benefit. And government needs to learn that.
That's like the definition of cronyism.
Yeah, and, and you live in a city where cronyism is run rampant, in a state where cronyism is run rampant, and I've often wondered if it's going to have to, the state at some grand level is going to have to fail for that to be firmly rooted out. Because as someone who opposed the stadium subsidies, because I, I found injustice, and the notion that, you know, individual taxes were going to be used to subsidize a, a personal business, I find it astonishing, and here we are, a year after, you know, they decided to leave, that because of the groundbreaking with this week, you know, you've got this whole caterwauling and whining again, not by people who are generally concerned about the economy, but, but people, organizations like the Providence Journal, which believe in environmental racism, you know, they're, they're very happy to have Invenergy build a, a facility in the middle of a, you know, a pristine woodlands, and they're not so concerned with, you know, the safety issues involved in South Providence. They were quite, quite happy to have, you know, in a, in a impromptu debate on TV, the editor and I got into an argument, when I suggested that, you know, perhaps they build Invenergy... the editor and I got into an argument when I suggested that, you know, perhaps they build Invenergy on the Blackstone Bowl yard, and he just thought that was ridiculous. And I said, well, you, you don't seem to have qualms about dropping this onto someone else's, that's NIMBYism. Well, no, it's, the fundamental issue at stake is self-ownership of the community, and allowing people in the community to make their own decisions about their own futures, and taking it away from people who ultimately are using the power invested in them either by election, or in many cases, by self-appointment, to twist that money, that energy, that power for their own personal good. And that, I think, is the biggest lesson the state has to learn.
Yeah.
And yet, despite all the failures, and despite what's happened the last couple of weeks to schools, it's not happening. Last area of policy, Wood Socket schools.
Yeah.
Not as bad as Providence.
No, no, definitely not, and I, I have said this every time this, this topic is brought up by most of the people I talk to at the doors, but Wood Socket schools are so much better than the economic situation would, would mean that they would be, because we have a lot of really loyal teachers who've been there since before the downturn, who are sticking around and, and, and doing everything they possibly can, which they shouldn't have to do, to make up for mismanagement on the city level and on the state level. And, and that's, that's, they deserve an enormous amount of credit for that, and they all know who they are.
Is the school board elected or appointed?
The school board was just made elected again, it was, it was turned to an appointed school board five, six years ago, something like that, it was, it was appointed, and then, this, last summer, I guess it's not this past summer, last summer, it was, it was, there was a vote, a public, what do you call them?
Charter.
Citizen, citizens, citizens' vote for, to, to make it back into an elected body, so, I am in favor of an elected school committee. I think the vote shouldn't have taken place during the summer, because that reduced voter turnout, but, you know, it is what it is.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Well, I wish you nothing but the best of luck.
Thank you.
You know, I had an idea, we should do this one night, sometime, when's the election?
August sixth.
August sixth. It's only a few weeks away.
Yup.
One night, let's, let's go downtown, I'll bring you handy candy, handy dandy, excuse me, remote coalition thing. We'll have, I'll have a bite to eat downtown, and we'll do a little live podcast from there.
I love that idea.
Live stream, and just kinda, you know, we'll publicize it ahead of time, so people wanna come in and say hi, or.
I love that idea.
Vent or, or motion, we'll do it on, we'll do it on our little handy dandy portable coalition, coalition on wheels, we call it.
Is it easy enough, maybe we can walk around Main Street to some of the businesses and, and, you know, maybe shop a little bit, too?
Yeah.
Part of that, I think that'd be a great idea.
Be a lot of fun.
Yeah, I think so.
Let's work on that.
Awesome, yeah, we'll talk.
All right, take a moment, if you will, we have, we've got two or three moments left, give kind of a, I don't know if you've evolved as stump speech person yet, but if, if you could imagine the entire city of Wood Socket was sitting there, assembled in front of you, all right, what would you say to them right now?
I've grown up in this city, I, I've lived, I've lived here my entire life, and I love the city, but I've seen what's happened to it over the course of my life, and, you know, it's not okay, the conditions of the roads and, and, and the mismanagement of the budget and, and the conditions that, that municipal government has put the schools into, you know, and, and, and that awful sewer treatment plant, and the pollution in the river, and all of it, it's not okay, and, and it's doing a disservice to us, Socket, you know? And I think the problem is fundamentally this established political culture that, that doesn't let good ideas blossom, and, and, and it is, is so opposed to anything new that they'd rather fight between their camps than fight for the people of Wood Socket. And that is something that I am trying to change, and, and we have to do this, because the city is at a precipice right now, where we could create an economic upturn on the industries that we've seen, Pataque and Worcester and Fall River, start to regrow their economies on, on, and the arts, and, and investments in, you know, enabling renewable energies, and, and, you know, and, and culture, and, and public events, we could do so much better for our economy, and therefore for the people, if we unfreeze the culture and start moving forward as a city together.
Well said.
Thank you.
Alexander Kithis, he is running for the city council of the great city of Wood Socket, and I say with love and admiration, I believe it to be Rhode Island's forgotten city, and clearly a city who's got the potential, the people, the skills, the tools necessary to move well out of that, once given the opportunity and once given the leadership.
Absolutely.
We'll talk this week.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much for having me.
All right, we're gonna close it on that, we are the Coalition, loud and proud, outrage porn-free, civilly disobedient media broadcasting live on the worldwide coalition network, here at the Go Local Live Broadcast Center, deep in the heart of the city we love, La Prav, the naked city, the city of hundreds of thousands of stories. Facebook.com/thecoalitionradio, on the mighty, mighty Twitter at @coalition_radio, and of course, the mothership at coalitionradio.us. As always, I want to take a moment or two to thank our sponsors, the fine people, at yaklubottingworks.com, Rhode Island's boutique soda, before they're new, they needed a boutique soda. One hundred-plus-year-old, despite the best efforts of your Rhode Island State Legislature to put them out of business, listen, it's summertime, you're gonna spend enormous amounts of time cooking for friends, and listen, so many people in Rhode Island are such talented cooks, and, don't drink the refinery soda, really. Pure cane sugar as opposed to whatever that other stuff is, natural flavors, the best root beer on the planet, a couple of new choices, you know, for your, for your dining pleasure, Yaklub Bottling Works, of course, Air Sciences, mold remediation, biohazard control, our good friend Daryl Goul, who joined us this night, he's an activist as well, working out of the Bristol Warren area, but servicing schools, individuals, companies, homes across Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and Connecticut, and even points further north. And of course, Beacon Shipping and Logistics, Beacon Shipping Logistics, one eight five five, three ship it. Imagine, if you will, we're coming up to that time where maybe you gotta get a car out to USC, or maybe you gotta get a car down to Florida, or maybe the parents are starting to talk about coming back to, to New England, whatever. Imagine, if you will, a international automobile shipping company with a presence right here in Little Rhodey, insured, professionally managed, they're used by car dealers across the country. Used of all three of these companies, they're willing to support independent media like this, they deserve your support, and of course, we do have sponsorship opportunities here. You notice, we are commercial-free, three hours of third rail political issues, uninterrupted by commercials, with people who are thought leaders both locally, as you saw tonight, literally from around the globe. Folks, our hashtag here is #TakeItPersonally, all three of our guests, four of our guests, actually, technically, tonight, take it very, very personally, from a community in New Mexico who's decided on their very own that they're going to take on the refugee border crisis, to a political slash educational activist who's decided that, you know what, maybe, just maybe, it's time for a change. Or, our most recent guest, a product of the city of Wood Socket, who's decided to stay home, build a career here, build a life here, and wants nothing less than the opportunity to bring back its city to its former glories. Folks, take it personally, we'll see you next Friday.